Yeah, I say we start.
I know, I don't realize it was not a hook already, sorry.
Yeah, I say we start.
It is August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two at this time. I'd like to go ahead and call the Board of Educat- New Hanover County Board of Education Policy Committee meeting to order. I will go ahead and call the role. Mr. Wildebohr.
Present.
Ms. Crable?
Present.
And I am present. A quorum is present. The next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Before we move on, I can't hear Pete very well.
Mr. Wildebohr, can you yell?
Can you say something else? So I can't hear you.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
I still can't. It's... Can we, can you turn yourself up or can we turn him up somehow? Thank you.
Turn me up.
There you go.
On the widest I can be.
Better, thank you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Appreciate it.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the agenda. Any discussion?
No.
All right. Hearing none. Ms. Crable, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr, how do you vote?
Yay.
I vote yes. The agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Crable, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr, how do you vote?
Yay.
I vote yes. The next item on our agenda.
Before we get started, can we welcome Ms. Dolores Ogilvy, who is our principal rep this month? Thank you for being with us. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, so the next item, thank you very much for being here. The next item on our agenda is student voice and the student voice presentation. We've been working on this for some time. I shouldn't say that. We have been listening to the work that has been done on this for some time. So at this time, Ms. Smith, would you care to get us started? Thank you very much for being here.
Sure. Good morning, everybody. I'm just gonna tell you who's on the Zoom and let them get started. And I think we're gonna, they're gonna hit on some of the connections to the strategic plan, just as a refresher. And then I'm gonna do the unfun part of helping like our collective memory of what we discussed in July compared to what it looks like today. And then I think they'll be ready to kind of open up for dialogue again. So you should have Tanaya Toon from Laney and Samin Von from Hoggard. And we have others, of course, that wanted to make it. But they're doing things like banned this morning, which is kind of cool, because that came up last, last time. And also, you should have on the Zoom, if she's not there already, one of the Wilma twenty-twenty-two women to watch, Ms. Shala Harper in the education category. So I just gotta give her props on that.
Congratulations, Shala.
All right, Tanaya, you ready?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to be here. So one of the connections with the strategic plan that we saw, I saw, is goal one in academic performance. For strategy one-one-one, it says, implement and sustain a high-quality curriculum and monitor the implementation of curriculum programs. So whenever we talk about student voice or our student engagement team, we really want that high quality, quality time for curriculum that we have to be, you know, presented to students so that they understand what we're doing, who we are, why student voice is so important. So for goal one, that's what I personally saw that connected with our policy. Now, I'll kick it off to Sami. He'll talk to you about goal two.
Hey, guys. So for goal two, for me, some of the key things that stood out was strategy two-point-one-one and two-point-one-two, establishing a learning environment that's supportive, culture-responsive, and focused on building relationships, as well as elevating student perspectives by making them leaders and decision-makers. So that was all under the student safety, people in places. And then for the equity, diversity, and inclusion, which is goal four on your guys' five-year plan, four-point-one, all the way to four-point-two-one, were basically just about making sure the school works out as equitable and diverse, so people can have a better sense of belonging. You know, that's ensuring there's like funding for all the equity teams and even making space for our engagement team and just ensuring equal access to all students. So I think a lot of what we're gonna present today ties along very well into your five-year plan. So it's, it's a win-win.
Ms. Joy, is Cassidy on there on the Zoom? I wasn't sure if she... Okay, just triple-checking. So I just looked through July nineteenth, the version we looked at that day, and put August ninth version right next to it. And so I'm gonna walk through that verbally and try to address the aspects that the students, you know, the feedback they received and how they applied it. Obviously, that's a challenge, because, you know, it's an hour-long conversation. Something might have come up, and then it might have been discussed for five minutes. And by the end of the five minutes, it might not have necessarily sounded like something to actually change. So there might be things you thought were gonna shift that didn't. But in any case, at the bottom of the first page, under section D, there's nothing significant in, in numbers one or two, other than the removal of the elementary piece under the superintendent's advisory council. I did want to note, there's two other places in the policy where elementary is mentioned. Those aren't new. They were there last month. And the language for those is under four-B and five-D. And that language is really meant to be open and inclusive, not restrictive in terms of implementation. And just really thinking about opportunities for the littlest learners' experiences, you know, to, to be included when possible. And then if you move down to, to number three, there's, that's probably the area where there's most minor shifts. So in the, the title of number three, you see board committees, board advisory committees, and ad hoc committees. Under letter B, you see voting privileges where allowed. So that language of making sure that we are following whatever state legal guidance provides. And, excuse me, there was also the conversation about, you know, the concern over commitment. So taking that concern and also sort of placing the impotence, impetus on all, not just students, but whoever is present, what are our expectations for their commitment? And how are we sort of collectively holding everybody accountable for consistency? And then letter D, it looks a little bit different. The language there, it says, selection, determine, and collaboration with students, along with the support of district leadership. So it kind of leaves it open for, in terms of implementation on that piece. And then under number four, with the student engagement team, the only thing that changed there is a consistency between AI and CI. So when you're looking out the coordination pieces, you're just gonna see consistency in each of the divisions. It's scripted out the division's participation, where I believe last month, AI, I don't remember exactly what it said, but it didn't have all those divisions listed. And the last thing, at the very bottom, under number five, you'll see E, because we did have that conversation about school improvement teams. So it's just including that encouragement from the board of thinking about the school improvement team as a useful structure inside schools. And I think we didn't get it on here, but another reference that we could add later on, if needed, is policy twenty-two-thirty, which is about board committees, which I think you guys are discussing today. But so those, those are all the, the changes in terms of language in the policy. And Tanaya is just gonna kind of review and clarify a couple of things real quick.
So before I clarify, we do want you guys to know that we have come up with some negotiations or any way to compromise, just in case any of these five that I'm gonna talk about, you know, we can't, you know, implement right now. So we have come up with some ways to, you know, connect some of these things together. But for starters, we have number one, the superintendent's student advisory council, and number two, the student equity team. So we would like to see those continue. And then for number three, we have one that we wanted to start, ensure that at least two high school students total onboard committees, board advisory committees, and add HOC committees. So that's something we wanted to, you know, show to you guys. And then number four, we have to establish a Hanover County Schools Student Engagement Team, a body of students established to maintain and strengthen student voice structures in New Hanover County. And then we have number five, create opportunities for connecting and convening any students who are in the former structures from D-one to D-four above, as well as an emphasis on students who are not participating in any of those former structures. So we just wanted that to show you guys that, to clarify that the top two are what we already have and that we still want to have. And then the other three are what we want to start to implement.
Question, is it question time? Or you want to keep going?
Yeah. Are you guys ready for the dialogue?
Yes, we really would like to hear from you guys and what you guys think.
Okay, so at this time, I will open it up to committee members or board members, if they have questions, comments, or concerns. So are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, a couple for you guys. First of all, thank you, Tanaya and Samin, for plowing through this over the summer. I know you guys are busy and, and could possibly be sleeping in or at the pool or beach right now. So thank you for being here with us. One thing that, that jumps out at me is I don't see this anywhere. I'm just wondering if you guys had backed off on wanting to do this. Are you no longer advocating to have a seat on the dais as a student advisor? Are you putting that on hold? Or is, am I missing that somewhere in your proposal?
We didn't really, like, put that forward. It was really mainly the, the two people on each committees, per se, and then that one overall student engagement team. We didn't see that there was necessarily a need for that. Then, because like the people on the committees would obviously then report out to you guys, and our engagement team would have a space per month or every other month, whatever it is, to then report out to you guys, too.
Okay. So I also, so feeding right into that, my next question was in number three, when you were talking about at least two high school students on the board committees, the board advisory committees, and the ad hoc committees. So because I was, you know, looking pretty clean-teenyly and closely at the board committees, I just wanted to call back to your attention that that is fifteen committees. So that is thirty students. And that is not even naming some of them, because I was thinking that it might not be appropriate for you guys to be on the student scholarship committee, because you would be, you know, basically interviewing, you know, your peers. And that's just me. We could, we could talk about that. Didn't know if you wanted to be on a legislative committee where you talked with the, the School Boards Association. And then looking at the Educated Year Committee, it wasn't certain if that was a good one or not. But, and then we would have to definitely check on some of the others, because they are, and Head Start would be one that we probably aren't gonna have students on, I would guess. And then like Shack is pretty much defined by the state statute, the, the Advisory Council for Exceptional Children. They seem to have something that is defined by the statute, as well as the Gifted Advisory Council. So those are ones I didn't even include in the count of fifteen. So how do you, how do you propose, or what are you thinking about that? Are these thirty students gonna come from the superintendent's advisory? Are they gonna come from the student engagement team? If we, if we get that together, are they gonna be able to commit to coming once a month? Because these, these committees all meet once a month. So had you guys talked about that at all?
I'll, I'll answer that, guys. We didn't discuss that, because that is really the implementation pieces. So we, we really didn't get into, like it says on letter D, selection, determine, and collaboration with students being present and district leadership. So the actual who, how, and when is not in that policy.
But if we put it in policy, that means we have to do it.
But that's not our job. That's not the job of the policy committee.
I'm just saying, if we put, it doesn't make sense to draft a policy that we don't have the commitment to do. And...
Seven board members fulfill those committees. They can repeat. I mean, seven board members fulfill their obligations on those committees.
But we're talking about students who their job is to go to school full-time. And we meet during their work time.
My job is to go to school full-time. I mean, my, my job is to go to school full-time. I think, you know, I think there could be hiccups. There could be road bumps, obviously. And then you fix them. I mean, I think these guys have been working on this for like a year. And I know it's gonna be difficult, because they're, they're kids. We, I mean, I think everybody understands that. But, you know, I just feel like with everything that they've put into this, to be like, okay, we'll wait a little bit longer or figure every single thing out before we move forward, we'll never move forward. We'll just never move forward with it if we don't jump in with our feet, figure out how it's gonna work. We have, I mean, I think letter D is kind of all-encompassing. We're gonna figure it out with district leadership.
Okay, so that said, if we're following the strategic plan, which they did, and somebody has to coordinate this. And so I'm still unclear from the superintendent and his staff on who is going to be the person responsible for this policy and helping guide our students and focus their voice, because their voice is needed and wanted. And, but we have to have an avenue for, we have to have somebody that's gonna champion that. And so that's what bothers me. And from the world of safety, you, you write down what you're doing so that you know that you can accomplish it. Or you're told what you have to do by law, and then you make that happen. This is one of those policies that says, we're not told by law that we have to do this. So we have to put in place something that we can manage. So that's all that I'm suggesting. That, that's what my biggest concern is, is that everything in here is good, and I see it as doable, except for who's gonna lead it. So, Dr. Faust, do you have any?
And if I could throw my two cents.
Mr. Wildebohr.
I'm just gonna throw my two cents, and I'm just trying to wait until you guys, you know, get done discussing. One thing, you know, just kind of, again, compromise, and I think that's where the students are at, is that they mention the word compromise, is maybe we want to change, you know, and that's something we may want to change in section three, you know, at least two high school students. Maybe we just say there's one advisory person per, you know, and I understand, maybe you could have, you know, two people to serve there, but at, at least one of them will come to the meetings, you know, that kind of thing. Haven't we ever gotten an answer on the legality of students voting on these committees? You know, it's here, where allowed. I mean, so I, I don't think we, my personal humble opinion is, I don't think we write that in the policy, where allowed. Why don't we, you know, why don't we hear from Colin? Yes, it's okay. No, it's not okay. You know, I don't know if, you know, if we want to, or again...
Pete, he already told us that. He already gave us that, that they, students are not allowed, per statute, to vote on board committees or on board issues. They have a voice, and they get to vote as appropriate as all the other members of the committee. And so board committees, the only people who vote are board members. And board issues, the only people who vote are us.
And I think we need to change that, the verbiage there, because it says, where allowed. So if they're not allowed, then I don't think that we should have that in there.
They, if, if it's not a board committee, Pete, if it's an advisory that the district runs, and they choose to vote, then they can vote there. But it is, most of our, like we talked about last time, most of our advisory committees do not really vote. They come to consensus. They talk about the issues, and they come to consensus. They don't vote. So Colin already cleared that up last time.
Well, again, then I, I think we need to have it clear. Okay, then again, as I'm, without being cut off this time.
So, Mr. Wildebohr, to clarify...
That we, that we have it clear. Yes.
Again, Mr. Wildebohr, to clarify, you are suggesting that we say in, or that the students say in number three, ensure that there is at least one high school student total onboard committees. Is that, are you making that recommended change?
Well, I, I'm saying that just because, to answer Ms. Crable's concern about thirty committee and those students, I think that would be one compromise we could go forth with and not have to do a whole bunch of changes. As I think, I think we need more on three, um, three, you know, to me, that's very ambiguous, whether they're allowed. Well, where are they allowed? That kind of thing. And then my, my third and last point, and then you guys talk, is, you know, in four, you know, I, I think we're very vague. I, I, I'm gonna question for SGA. I mean, I think SGA is a committee that is, and notes, one of the board members said, that's a popular test. Well, you look at all voting as being a popular test. So we do need to have SGA. If we can have the equity team in there and other groups clearly listed in there, I think it's very important, you know, the superintendent's student advisory, again, I think that's appropriate. But I think we also should have SGA being one of the groups that it's not just not limited to. I think it needs to be clearly defined in there, as I said every time we've discussed this. And I do want to say, one other thing before I close, what I, what I'm gonna add here, is I do wanna thank everyone, all the, all the folks that have been part of this, because I think, you know, you guys, both my other learning colleagues have, have mentioned this, but I think it's extremely refreshing and important to have student voice as part of this. So I'm definitely not trying to be a naysayer. I'm just saying that I guess I agree with Ms. Crable to, to an extent, that I think we need to have this well-done, so we don't have to worry about a whole bunch, you know, that, yeah, I agree with Ms. Warrior, that there's gonna be times where we have to change things or whatever. But I'd like to have it well, you know, just, just right, so that we can move forward with it. And we're not saying, well, we're probably gonna have a lot of changes we have to make. We are gonna have changes. I definitely understand that. But, you know, I think maybe moving into one high school student, further clarifying who can vote, when they can vote. And again, I really am gonna continue to push that SGA, because that is a student-elected group, you know, as diverse as, as the students want to make it, to, to be clearly established in four. Thank you.
Stephanie, do you have something?
Okay, Ms. Walker?
Thank you. I guess what we're trying to figure out here is, it seems like there are people that want to go ahead and get it established and work it out, and others want to get it perfect before it goes. I don't think that it'll be perfect straight away. I, I think that establishing student voice is what the aim is here. And there's kinks to work out, I'm sure. But I mean, if, if, if it's clear that, I feel what where needed, I think, or where, what was it? Was it terminology? Where allowed or whatever, I mean, that's, I think that says a lot, because, I mean, they're not gonna be to vote on policy, for policy committee. But, you know, the advisory ones are the ones that we know things come out of, you know, where we meet, and we don't necessarily vote, but we decide as a committee that we want to bring things out. I think student voice is important. And I, I guess the ones that Ms. Crable named, we can really look at either further. But I think, like Mr. Bowyer said, that we have to, I'd like to get this on the agenda for September's meeting. I feel like we doing, working on this all summer. You guys have been patient. The kids have been working hard. And I think it's time to make a move on it. And whatever needs to be kind of looked at and maybe discussed, let's go ahead and do it. But the full board could do that, too. Just giving out a committee that's important today, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. I'll just briefly add my two cents. I actually agree with Mr. Wildebohr about having at least one high school student on there, because that doesn't really preclude two. It doesn't preclude three. It doesn't preclude four. And it does provide the student with a little bit more flexibility in terms of, you know, fulfilling those obligations, especially at the start. I think at least one would, would, I don't know if the students would be interested in that, having at least one, because again, they can have two or three. It depends on what they can do. But would, so would y'all be interested in that? Would that be something that would be problematic in terms of how you feel about this policy? Either student, both students?
I definitely, I think that that's a change we can definitely be willing to make. Like you said, it's at least one, you know? And if it makes it easier convenience, that'll be better, because then we can have two or three, or have students that are interested in those specific committees. And then going back to the SGA thing, you know, I, I'm a part of my student council. I'm, I'm the junior class president and stuff, but I'm still involved in, in student voice, you know? So I think the key thing that we wrote in section four is that it can include, but will not be limited to, students from advisory, the equity teams, whatever, and then also additional high school students. So I have, for example, we have a lot of plans with my local student council and the student body president, and they're communicating with me, and they want to get things done at a countywide level. They've definitely been interested in working with student voice. So I don't think that, like, the policy's meant to be open and included for other groups like SGA and stuff like that.
And I will point out, it does say students and school leaders. And again, the point of this is not Mr. Bowyer's voice, Ms. Crable's voice, Mr. Wildebohr's voice, the Board of Education's voice. We have a pretty loud voice. The point is student voice. And if they think students and school leaders is sufficient in that policy, because it is in there, then, I mean, at some point, we have to trust them. I mean, yeah, they're young.
Well, I would say...
But we gotta trust them.
I'm sorry. No, I, I definitely do. But I, again, I'm gonna just keep going, because either we list, you know, I, again, I'm looking at, you know, these, these other teams that are picked by an adult, which is wonderful. And I think principals are very, very intelligent. I think counselors are very, very intelligent. But, you know, like the equity team, that's not selected by students. I think to get even more of a student voice, I mean, I would just love to see SGA mentioned as, as another group. I mean, I don't think it's that big of a deal, not, you know, that there's, unless there's some reason we can't. I mean, well, not really, you know, if one of the, the student says, well, I really don't think SGA should be mentioned there, because, I haven't heard that. I've heard, well, yeah, they're mentioned kind of in other ways. And, and again, my biggest thing in that group, compared to the other groups mentioned, is that they are selected by students. They're not selected by an adult, even with the best intention, by those adults. You know, that, SGA is selected by students to lead students, for students. And I, it just, it, it just, you know, bewilders me why that group would not be named. But the superintendent's student advisory council, which is again, chosen, as far as I know, by either the principal or the counselor, and the equity teams, which is again, chosen by either the principal or the counselor, they're mentioned by name. Either, either mention them all or don't mention any of them, as I guess my question. You know, what, can I hear from one of the students why they don't feel SGA should be mentioned specifically?
Um, I do believe SGA, you know, can be, you know, prison in the policy. Just like Sami said, I was in, I was the ninth grade president last year, and I'll be running this year. So it's important that we have those students there. I guess it really wasn't on our minds. We just, you know, it slipped our minds. But we do, it, it would be fine to add it. You know, we see no problem with it. We do want every student that can be involved to be involved. So if that's what is needed to make sure that this policy looks equitable and, you know, that's, that's what we will do.
So then...
Thank you for that answer. That was a great answer.
Well, then at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to...
I did not ever get my question answered.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was your question?
Um, the question was, the, I want to know, before I can approve this policy, who is gonna be responsible for it? Yes.
Ms. Crable, I think it says that in section two. It says chief equity officer. Am I not right?
Okay. So this will, this, um, this will be led by...
See, it says selection.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wildebohr.
Chief Communications Officer, but I think that it was brought back that everybody thinks that, yes, the rest of the committee thinks that it would be under the, you know, the chief equity officer. and working hand in hand with the chief communications officer. I believe that was the discussion last month, am I not correct?
Yes, and I believe that is reflected in the policy. So I guess, I don't know if there's any other discussion, but I would.
Well, again, I'm trying to figure out the wording here. Every one of our other policies says the superintendent or designee, and will, blah, blah, blah. And, and sometimes the designee is clearly stated as the chief academic officer, the chief financial officer, the assistant superintendent for student support, a lot of these kind of things. And I am just not comfortable having a policy where there is not some, written in here somewhere, who is responsible for where does the buck stop? And like, policies that are in the facilities in operation, the buck stops with Mr. Anderson. You know, superintendent designee there. HR falls within, you know, Dr. Barnes, and I'm just looking at everybody who's in the room here today. You know, technology, I mean, those, it stops there. And I just think that we need some wording, and if we want to pass it through to the whole board with permission from the team to change some words, or to insert the appropriate words. And of course, this has to go through, you know, our legal, and, you know, Colin is not here on the call with us. And McKenna, who works with us with the NCSBA, they have to look through and make sure that we haven't, you know, violated anything. But if you look to at the other policies that are around the state, there's only four other counties besides ours that have anything even close, they've got it clearly defined on whose responsibility it is. And I just feel like we need to have that, because there's a lot of coordination that's required in this policy, a lot of things that we want to do, and we all agree that they're all important. But if we have them in there and we can't do it, then it just, I just have a hard time with writing something down and then not knowing going in, we're not going to be able to do it, or do it with fidelity.
I think we're pretty clear, though, aren't we? I mean, it's going to go under the chief equity officer, and they will be working hand in hand with our communications team.
So are you going to take the lead on fixing that wording, or are we going to give that to somebody else to fix the wording?
I mean, we can, we have three weeks before our next board meeting. I'm sure, you know, we can add something to that very simple effect.
I'm sure we can, but I think we need to define it. That's where I think sometimes we just, we have this very clear strategic plan, where it lists what we're going to do, who's going to do it, what are our target measures. And we're, and we're going against that by putting in a new policy that, where we don't have those kind of things set up. So somebody has to do it.
I don't think we can go against our strategic plan by including our students. I mean, the superintendent just said that it can go under the chief equity officer with work with the communications.
So who's going to write it? Are you going to write it?
Sure, I can.
I'll do it, I don't mind, I just, we can't send it through without words.
Just a quick question, point of clarification. And this is me having no, or too little knowledge of policy development, I guess, other than this opportunity. So when you're looking at this policy, there are multiple places where, the way I'm reading it, it does clearly identify the who, and it includes, actually, I think Mr. Smith talked last time about how they seek to not do anything in isolation, how they seek to collaborate. When I'm reading the policy, it looks like it's even inclusive of all of our divisions in terms of the coordination. So I guess my question would be, is the desire to eliminate all of, all of that and create like one singular lead?
No, that's not what I'm saying, that we have to collaborate, that's what we do. That's what the school system does on a regular basis, is, it's not run in the ivory tower, you know, from the superintendent's office. It's run by his staff and the people that work for those staff and the people that work for those staff. But in the end, when it comes time for us to make sure that this policy is being enforced, there's really, there needs to be somebody who's accountable to that. And so we already decided that, and we just need to write some words in there somewhere.
Ms. Walker?
I just want to say, I mean, we keep referring to the, I'm sorry. We keep referring to the strategic plan, but it's a living document as well. And like Mr. Bowyer said, it's not going against the strategic plan to have it in there. I think adding it in there with measurable goals, I think, is valid, and I think we can do that. And this is not, you guys are just bringing it out of committee, it's not going to be passed by you guys. The board has to pass it, and then it's going to be thirty days. So, I mean, there's plenty of time to, to kind of get it, get things changed, get wording done, get it checked by legal and all that stuff. I just think that it's time to get it out of committee. And I'm hoping that's what happens, because I think there's some people on the board that do want to vote on it.
If I could jump in, I got my hand raised, but I don't know if you can see it. I agree with Ms. Walker, I think we do need to move forward. And, I mean, even if we just want to put a line in, as Ms. Crable just mentioned, that it is, the buck should stop, I think, with the superintendent ultimately, or his designee. Even we could just, we could put that single line in there somewhere, maybe at the beginning, you know, that this, this, you know, because the superintendent's the one that's going to be hearing from the student advisory group, et cetera. The board, which he serves on, is going to be hearing from the student voice group monthly. So I think, I think maybe just saying, instead of trying to define, well, it's the chief diversity officer or the chief communications officer, or, you know, as you said, you know, we have a superintendent, we pay, you know, he is the leader of the school system under the Board of Education, and maybe we should just give him that authority to superintendent or designee, leave it at that. Just put one extra line in there, and then, you know, like I say, then we can move it on to the board.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think that language is efficient, I think it sort of covers everything. Believe me, ask the staff, the designee changes often.
Right, right, and I mean, and it could be a situation that, one point, the chief communications officer is really, you know, we also have a brand-new chief officer of equity and diversity. So it may be that the chief author of communications takes it for a while, and then it's, you know, at some point, you know, moved, moved, but again, if we say the superintendent's ultimately responsible for it, then he's ultimately responsible for it, makes it kind of easy.
Can I make one comment, just for consideration and distinction? The difference that I see in this policy opportunity is that every other policy that comes to mind in the policy manual is, shall do. We will, these are, this is the way that we will carry it out, this is the person responsible. And so just a matter of distinction in thinking about how to implement this policy. This is very bottom-up, and so we shall do everything else, but if the student voice group takes it in a different direction, dissolves for a year, whatever the case, you know, we don't want to be put in a position necessarily to shall do this thing that was always meant to come from students up. So it's just, I'm not making a suggestion, just a distinction, in that this is an opportunity for students, and ensuring that we have a designee or a touch point to facilitate, but it's not a we shall on a day-to-day, and that's true of almost every other policy, it's just a distinction that I want to make there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Mr. Anderson? Good morning.
Good morning. You know, along those same lines, Josh hit on a point that I was, wanted, just to make a comment for your consideration. You know, what we're trying to do, I think, in item five, it says, you know, create opportunities. And I wanted to show a distinction, so some of these say ensure. So this is the board, in item three, the board, superintendent, and designee shall ensure. You know, what if there are not two high school representatives, or one high school representative? Do these committees not convene? So where it says ensure, I think, to get to Josh's point, if we provide the opportunity, we're deemed appropriate by the board for at least one high school student to participate on these committees, you know, you're, you shall provide the opportunity, but you're not bound, that committee is not bound by that participation. And then under, you know, four A, same thing there. You know, provide opportunity for student representation, I think that goes back to your point.
That's a very good catch, that's a very good catch. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is that, students, is that something, can we change that language? Instead of ensure, provide an opportunity for at least?
Yes, that's fine.
Yes, that, that makes sense. We're not trying to have students, force students to be there that don't even want to be there. Our main goal is just to give them a platform, so we can definitely change that.
So I think where we see those words ensure, we will change them to create opportunities? And I can make those changes. Provide opportunities. I was just saying, number five says create opportunities, provide opportunities. I mean, I was just trying to be consistent. It's, okay, excellent. So I think then, with those changes, and to recap, we are adding SGA at Mr. Woldenbor's request. We are changing at least two high school students to at least one. And we are changing ensure to provide or create opportunities. And with those changes, Mr. Woldenbor?
I'd like to make the motion that we, with those changes, move this on to the entire board in September.
Thank you, Mr. Woldenbor, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw one more thing out there before we move forward. Had you guys given any thought to perhaps creating an ad hoc committee called the Student Voice Committee, so that we, we have some way of evaluating the effectiveness of all the things in the policy, and to keep it living and breathing? Because ad hoc is one of those ones that we, we put together for a purpose. And to me, I think we have a really great purpose on how do we make the student voice meaningful and attainable, according to all the definitions that you guys provided in key terms. And that automatically, if you have an ad hoc committee, and automatically gives you a voice at every meeting under committee reports. So had you guys talked about what that might look like, or as, as a way to always have your voice, you know, kind of in front of us?
If I may, you can create, as board chair, can't you create a committee at any time?
No, I cannot.
You can create an ad hoc committee.
I can suggest it, and the whole entire, and I'm going to suggest that coming up in a minute, but I didn't want to suggest it if the, and take away the student voice. If the students, you know, aren't amenable to that, then why would I say that and even bring it for our discussion? Because I'm not allowed, the whole board has to approve it. I can bring it up, but the whole board has to approve it. So are our students still with us?
Yes, we have had discussion on making it a committee. That was one of our compromises that we came to think about, that we would make it a committee if that was what we needed to do.
I still think our, our first priority, though, would be to keep it the way it is with the engagement team, and get them that monthly meeting, but we have given that other option thought, but this would be preferred.
Okay.
And I think what I'm hearing, and please tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing from the students that this would give them several different ways, and to get maybe even a greater or grander number of voices to bring that single voice. A wide group of, you know, between, you know, various teams, and then other, where you just have one small, the entire voice you'd hear.
Mr. Woldenbor, near two and a half years in, they have not perfected the Zoom technology. You are in and out.
No, no, I'm saying the difference between what Crable is suggesting, what they're suggesting, I think that's the point, I think that they, I think, that it kind of seems that the probability of having a larger voice and more, and what, students.
No, Mr. Woldenbor, I wasn't commenting on your comments, I was simply telling you that you're fading in and out, your Zoom link is unstable.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, I'm ready to.
I'll try to.
Okay. If you text me, I can, I can say something. But, yeah, okay, so are we ready to vote? Ms. Crable, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Woldenbor, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I.
It's going to go under policies for first reading with changes, right?
That's correct. And that's how I will vote, I will vote yes. I would like to thank the students. Ms. Smith, I know you worked on this for a long time. Ms. Harper as well, thank you, Ms. Harper, if you're on. You both did an amazing job, and I'm sure you guys are so proud of these kids. So thank you guys very much, and we will see you in November. Will you be here for, in September?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, that is on for first reading with changes. The next policy, the next item on our agenda is item five, policy updates. We will begin with policy twenty-two thirty, board committees.
Okay.
Ms. Crable?
I am going to try this for the sixth time now to get this, out of this policy and through. So when we went through the last policy committee and the, the work session, and then now here back again. So it's, it was clear that the budget development committee, the board is insisting that all of us be on that committee, so I will drop the changes that I was recommending. The number three, family communications committee, the, it is the recommendation from the communications office, as well as the family communications committee members, that we disband this committee, because it is no longer relevant to the work it was created to provide, the work it was, it was created to do, and replace it with the superintendent parent advisory. Then, and again, all of these are going to have to be changed to include students in the membership, where appropriate. So the, the budget committee, do we think that students should be on the budget committee and listen to budget discussions?
Sure.
Okay. The, and since we don't really meet in committee, they meet here, they would just be invited to the audience, you know, to pay attention. So then, student scholarships, do we want students on that one?
No.
Okay.
I think so.
Mr. Woldenbor?
I said, I wouldn't think so, I think that's maybe a conflict of interest.
You're going to have to speak loud, because we can't hear you.
I'm not an attorney, but I'm pretty sure that would be a serious FERPA violation.
Yeah, okay. Policy committee, yes, we would add students on that. Legislative committee, do you think that they want to be a part of that?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay, Title IX committee, we would put the students there. And then, so I had, as another committee, I had student voice crossing that one out. The, then we go into, and of course, these, we have to, some of them, we're going to need a little bit more wording, which I can work with the subject matter expert outside of this before we go to the next committee to make sure that our wording is right. The board advisory committees, Ms. Barnum had wanted to look at the name. Are you on the, the call, Ms. Barnum?
No, she's not.
Okay, so that one, I'll still have to get with her. She wanted to look at the name, the ACIS Advisory Council for Exceptional Students. That one, can we put students on that? I guess, is anybody here that?
I don't think anything with students we can have our student rep on there because of FERPA. I mean, I don't, well, yeah, I don't know.
It's, it's just making recommendations for needed improvements, serve, I mean, this is where they would be, students would be talking about their fellow students with special needs. They're not talking about Stephanie with special needs, they're talking about student population. So I will double-check that with Julie and make sure we got that. Calendar committee, students on that. What?
I said definitely.
Okay. The business council, the, do we want students on that, when it's primarily the business community?
Yes.
I would say so, because you have students that are, you know, going to the. I would say so because you have students that are, you know, going to the early, uh, to the early college, CTEC or something, so I would say definitely.
Educator of the Year Committee?
No.
No.
Okay, the Gifted Advisory Council, the that one, I guess we would have to ask Clarice, Dr. Facen, because it 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 clearly states the membership there. And like one board, one board member, four parents of children, two community members. So I need to ask, you know, if there's anything we have to do to put students on because it may be legislated, like Shack is legislated. So I need to ask about that one. Head Start, I didn't think students needed to be a part of that.
You can't have them on there.
The, and so Shack, yes. And then again, that's where I had another opportunity to put Student Voice, so we'll cross that one out. Then Board Ad hoc Committees, if you look on on the back page where we have the Bond Priorities, Capital Request, the Isaac Bear Committee, which I am recommending that we dissolve and move that into the school district to look at, because that's where we are. We're in the planning phase of that right now. The NCSBA Legislative Services Committee, we are merging into the Legislative Committee that we just put on the front. And then Board Meeting Agenda, that was dissolved. And CTEC has requested to dissolve and be absorbed into the the Business Council. So we've got those. And just making sure that with the wording of the ad hoc committee, that as time and situations demand, ad hoc committees may be created. I took out appointed and changed it to created by the chairperson with the approval of the board. So that answers your question, Mr. Boyer, about can't board chair just make one up? The Chairperson assigns up to three persons to serve on the committee. Additional committee membership is determined depending on the nature of the committee. The ad hoc committees are temporary and formed for a specific purpose. Ad hoc committees have no final authority and are subordinate to the advisory and advisory to the board. The board clerk will maintain a list of ad hoc committees. I felt it was important that we keep this list and including the date that it was created and the date it was dissolved so that we know clearly what we've what we have a little history on what we've done. The Board Appointments to Outside Committees, this is a new letter, but I added it in based on another policy, just so that we can kind of wrap all of our policy work into one big policy and then ones that need more specific guidance will have their own policies. So that is what that one is. And it's specifically referencing Policy 2660, Board Appointments to Outside Committees. And that one, of course, would have no students because we want we want to make sure that we have someone on those outside committees that fully understand the workings of New Hanover County Schools. The letter E was added in for Board Committee Expectations. And basically just saying all board standing in advisory committees will have a chair, take review and approve minutes or a group memory, have a clear mission and goals, determine its member length, recruit and maintain a diverse committee membership using a common membership application and recruiting time window, periodically report progress to the entire board, not towards. So that, and then in open, open meetings laws, we basically, I'm just putting in standing committees and subcommittees, you know, they're all so subject to open meeting laws. And then in the cross references, I added Policy 2650, which is the liaison to the School Boards Association. That's the new committee we created. Board Appointments to Outside Committees, that's Policy 2660, referenced in letter D. The Business Advisory Council, Policy 2660, 2670, and the Student Wellness Policy, 6140. Because that one specifically says that we have to have, that's another policy, that we have to have board membership. So I'd like to move this forward to the entire board for consideration and to put it in the existing policies for amendment that does not need a first or a second reading.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Are you making a motion?
I'm making that motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second? All second. Ms. Craybill, how do you vote?
Well, we need discussion.
I'd like to have a discussion.
Any further discussion?
Discussion. I I I'm going to keep coming back. I mean, I I really think, number one, Ms. Craybill, you've done a very nice job on this. But I still think we need to do some more. Your, your, I can't pull it down, but your section E here has got some some definitions and some clarity to it, but it's got so much it doesn't define. And I know it's going to be, well, that's, you know, for the board, the individual committees to do. I think we need to have a uniform. As you say here, a uniform, membership application. I don't think it should be where one committee has somebody on on there for five years and another committee you're on every year. I think that needs to be uniform as well. And I I think just saying we have a common membership application and, you know, recruiting window. I think that needs to be further defined because, and again, unlike a lot of the things we we hand over to the superintendent to to do, this is something that the board has to do. So I think it does need to be further defined. You know, the applications will be from, you know, like we do with superintendent's evaluation policy. The common window is from here to here. And I mean, we're still leaving that as a big question mark. And I think that's not fair to people who want to be, you know, to be considered to join committees. And I think we also need to go ahead and, you know, where where's this common, you know, to define? We're going to have a common membership application. Who's going to do that? Is that something that's the board chair is going to do? Is that something that, you know, again, who who will be doing that? So I think I would just like to see some further definitions. You know, this question's been brought to me since we started. And I think we're on the right path here moving forward, but I think we need to have those questions answered. I think we do need to have, you know, I don't think, as I said, I don't think one board, I don't want to hit the same points again, but I don't think that one committee should have, be doing it this way. And if you go and try to apply for this other committee, it's done totally different. You know, somebody's on a committee for five years and doesn't have to ever reapply. And somebody on another committee is reapplying every year because that's what their committee's doing. So I don't know why we wouldn't have a uniform, as it says here, you know, a common membership application and common practices to go with it.
Okay, so Mr. Wildebore, to answer your question, I'm going to throw this back out to the team. We just said with the Student Voice, we can't let this delay. We'll work out the details later. So this is, this to me is not worth holding up, amending this policy where we have committees that are listed that we don't even do and committees that we have listed that were not following what their missions and their goals are. So we already talked about having a uniform, a uniform membership application. And as I mentioned at last policy meeting and in the work session, that I had planned on convening a meeting of the district's subject matter experts that are on these committees to work on what that membership application looks like. Because there are several committees that already have a really strong application. And we should be using some of those in there. So we we need to get rolling on this because the school year is starting and we have, we have been out of compliance with this policy since I've been on the board and since you've been on the board, since Ms. Walker's been on the board. So it's time that we make these these immediate changes. And some of the committees, if you'll read in their bylaws and what they have right now, their term limits are set by legislation. So some of that we're not going to be able to change. That that they're set by, they need to have two years or they need to have three years and they need to be rotating and all that kind of stuff. So we, some of it cannot be exactly the same in there. So I haven't laid out what is part of the committee, a part of the policy. This is one of those ones that we can take care of right now. To me, which is even a little bit different than the Student Voice policy, that we had a lot, we have a lot of questions on that one, but we are moving that one forward. So to hold this one back, I think would be kind of inappropriate or not, not in the school district's best interest.
Ms. Craybill, thank you very much. I'll add my two cents and then we can vote because I'd like to keep us on time. But to to your point, and I know Mr. Wildebore said we're on the right path, we're on the long path. We've been talking about this for a year. So we've gone back, we've tried to incorporate every single thing that every single person wants. And at some point, you you just have to vote against or you have to vote for because I think a lot of work has been done. I appreciate the work that's been done. And I trust Ms. Craybill to sit down with district leadership and figure out some precise suggestions. But it's, I mean, the policy looks looks good. And as she said, we are not in compliance. We're not doing what it says now. So there's a motion on the floor. There is a second. And at this point, I will go ahead and call the question. Ms. Craybill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebore, how do you vote?
No.
I will vote yes. That policy goes on for first reading.
It's not a first reading.
I'm sorry, not for first reading. It goes on for amendment. We don't need first or second reading on it.
And I will, I will make the changes that the board suggested during the Policy Committee and what we just talked about here about students.
Just have to clarify a question, if you don't mind.
Ms. Walker?
This is not going up for first or second reading. So when you say amend it, is it going to come up to us to vote on this?
It comes, it comes up to be discussed at the board meeting and then the board will vote on whether we pass the amendments.
If anybody has input, further input?
Yes.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
The input time doesn't change. We just don't have to go through first and second reading when we're amending. So that'll help us in going forward with policies.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, and I'm going to be very strict on time here because I do want to make sure that our staff can return to their other duties. But we have policy revisions, minor changes from the NCSBA. I will point out, just very, very briefly as an aside, that our contract with the North Carolina School Boards Association regarding policies is about to expire. And I will send out an email to the rest of the board discussing our options moving forward.
We already voted for that at the last board meeting.
Oh, we did? Great. Well, that works.
You asked for it to be on the agenda and it was amended.
All right, I didn't know if I got on. All right, great. Excellent. So good. Cool. Well, let's look through the cleanup table. We will start with Policy 1200. And I'll tell you what we should do. If you, we just passed many of these within a year and a half ago. So if you have something you would like to discuss, stop me. Who, does anybody have anything on Policy 1200, governing principles? Put Policy 1200 on for existing policies that do not need a first or second reading. To clarify, Ms. Walker, anybody, these policies have been passed. They've gone through first and second reading. They're just being amended. Policy 1300, does anybody have anything on governing principles? Please put 1300 on the board agenda.
And of course, Ms. Olbey, if you have anything that jumps out at you, just jump in, okay? Some of these are pretty basic.
Policy 1400, governing principles. School initiatives. Okay, 1400 on the agenda, please, for the board meeting. 1500.
And and Mr. Boyer, we are just discussing the updates, we're not discussing the policy in whole, correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
And Mr. Wildebore, would you just make, well, I can make the comment, is that most of these that we're going through right now are basically just correcting typos, are adding in better legal references. They're they're really not substantive.
That's correct.
Right. That's what I wanted to mention. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, Policy 1500, governing principles, safe, orderly, and inviting environment. 1500 on the board agenda. Policy 1600, professional development. 1600 will go on. Policy 1700, removal of barriers. Okay, 1700 will go on. Policy 1720-4030-7235, Title IX, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex.
The, I just wanted to make a note for for those who are watching is that this is different from the Title IX policies that we approved at the last board meeting. And it's basically only correcting a typo in the first paragraph. There was, we have had no changes and it is straight out of the statute.
Thank you very much, Ms. Craybill. 1800, governing principles, stewardship of stewardship of resources. 1800 on for a reading. 2310, public participation at board meetings, another update.
Yeah, and that one basically was, if you look in, the only real change there was in the first paragraph where we added public participation meetings because, and that's not by law, that's what we we did when we created our our town hall and and other public forum participation meetings with that. And we've gotten, we continue to always get comments. I just wanted to, not worth, it's not, it's not changing. But in the last paragraph of letter of letter A, it says, "The chairperson shall establish the amount of time for individuals and group presentations." We get, you know, hounded on that all the time on why can't we speak longer? And it's because it's it's in our policy.
Okay, thank you very much. Policy 3225, 4312, 7320, technology responsible use.
I had one question. Even though most of these are only for typos, I did have one question for this. Ms. Brunson, when I was reading, I read through it just since it was an opportunity to read through and some of these were approved before I was on the Policy Committee. Do we have to make any amendments to this policy to accommodate our new one-to-one program? Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we're good to put that on? Okay, 3226, 4205, internet safety.
Same question? Okay.
All right, 36, 3226, 4205 on the board agenda. 3470, 4305, alternative learning programs in schools. Okay, please put 3470, 4305 on the agenda. 4270, 6145, concussion and head injury.
I had a question on that one on, under record keeping. Of letter H and where at the bottom it says Superintendent's Annual Report to the Board on Compliance with Laws and Policies Related to Student Wellness Shall Include a Report on the System's Compliance with These Laws. Is that, would would that be reported to us through Shack? But Julie's not here to answer that question. Would that be reported through the Policy 6140 update?
We make sure that there is an annual report on how it gets reported through which venue that I'm sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
4270, 6145 will go on for for board reading. 4239, 7311, bullying and harassing. Okay, 42, 4329, 7311 is on the agenda.
Can I, can I just, one, for the folks who are following along at home, too, I just, I mean, this is also another, a topic that gets brought up frequently. And just wanted folks to know that we we take this policy, you know, very seriously. And really, and there's nothing has changed in our current policy. And this was just to, again, to fix a typo.
Okay, thank you. 5070, 70, 7350, public records. Okay, that will go on as well. 5071, 7351.
Oh, that one, too. That was one of the ones that public records, I'm sorry, I couldn't find it on my list. That was basically just to update legal references. So there was nothing in there. And I'm only saying these things out loud because some people wonder like what's going on, you know.
Sure, yeah. And and these, again, you know, these will be available for review by the public for three weeks.
Yeah, they are. But they, but why we're, why we're not talking about them, I think, is what people might be interested in knowing.
Absolutely. Okay, so 6401-9100, ethics and purchasing function. Okay. 6510, equipment, materials, and supplies. Okay, that will go on as well. 6525, network security. 6525.
Dawn, are we good? This has been reviewed for the one-to-one stuff, too? Okay.
7430, substitute teachers. That one's on for the Board. 7503, teleworking. 7503 is moving forward. 8340, insurance. 8340 is moving forward as well. 9220, security of facilities. 9220 is moving forward. And, I believe I've gotten them all.
Yeah, and I, yeah, on that one, too, I just wanted to make sure folks knew that that one was, um, the, I read through that one, you know, carefully again for, even though we just did that last year, the, nothing has changed, and it was really just to update, you know, cross-references.
Well, um, I have no words, but, uh, we have managed to finish a meeting a full 15 minutes ahead of schedule. Give yourselves, all of you, a round of applause. Thank you guys very much. Uh, and the last item on our agenda is adjournment.
Can I just make another comment before we adjourn?
Ms. Crabill?
The, um, so, these ones, um, that we, that we flew through, the NCSBA gives us updates in March and in September. Um, we were, uh, a little behind on reviewing our updates because we were so entrenched with going through these the first time, and so these ones right here were the easy ones. We do have another, um, 43, uh, policies that are going to take just a little bit more work, um, and that is what we'll be working on before. So, and those will, of course, be posted for everybody to look at, but, um, we get a, a table that tells us what all these changes were for, um, so that we know what to look for as we're reviewing.
Ms. Crabill? I'm sorry, Ms. Walker.
I don't need to do any longer, but I just, I'm curious, is there a point where we can go on the website and get rid of the old policy name and just have one? Because I think it confuses a lot of people when they go on there. I mean, I know you guys went through them all and...
Dr. Barnes, did you have something to say about that?
Oh, sorry. I was saying preach, sorry.
Yeah, no, uh, and I, I think that's a really good point. I think that's a really good point. I don't know, Ms. Crabill?
Yeah, so, um, when I, I, I asked McKenna that question myself, and until we get all the new policies approved, we still have to go back and reference that, and, um, and to go, and until we get kind of a little bit caught up with our September ones, we need, like, this last batch, then we'll be ready to move it into more of an archive, you know, state of, like, they could, there, we're always going to keep them, but it won't have to be up there to look at.
You don't have the correlation tables.
Yeah, correlation tables will, will continue to be up there, and then the old policy, um, will be archived, so it won't be dual, but we're, we're almost there.
All right. I, I do, thank you for that. That's an excellent point. Um, okay. Um, before we adjourn, though, I will ask for a motion to put existing policies on the Board, um, without first or second reading for amendment, uh, without cha, or with the noted changes, but without additional changes.
2230 is going to have, it's going to be a little bit of change.
Okay. So, 2230, you can clean it up, 2230, uh, 1800, 1200, 2310, 1300, 3225, 4312, 7320, 1400, 3226, 4205, dash, 4205, 1500, 3470-4305, 1600, 4270-6145, 1700, 4329-7311, 1720-4030-7235, 5070-7350, 5071-7351, 6401-9100, 8340, 7430, 9220, 7503, 6510, and 6524. Is there a motion?
I'm motion to approve those 23 items that you just wrote.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Crabill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I vote yes. Uh, and is there a motion to adjourn?
No. You didn't do Policy 4004.
Oh, I'm sorry. Policy for first reading with changes and revisions. Uh, 4004, Student Voice, is there a motion to move that forward to the Board for first reading?
With changes to be approved by Colin Shines.
With changes. All right. A motion to move forward with changes. Is there a second?
Second.
And, Ms. Crabill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wildebohr, how do you vote?
Yay.
I vote yes as well.
I'll, I'll take the lead in getting that to Colin, in getting the words, um, the recommended words.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Without any discussion, uh, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. Thank you, everybody. Bye, everybody.